Mia.
Good evening, everybody. And first of all, welcome to the Health and Environment Policy Committee this evening. It's the 2nd of March. My name is Paula Ferguson and I am the Chair of this committee. Thank you to everybody in the room for so beautifully becoming silent as the bell started at 6:30. That was marvelous. Please come on before the meeting starts and said, welcome, everybody. And remind people that we are both being audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website. In addition, a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. Can I please remind officers who are joining us virtually to turn off their cameras and their microphones until writers speak? Can I also remind members to speak clearly this evening? And please, if you can remember to use your microphone. And when you finish speaking, please turn off your microphone because it really does affect the sound. Also, if you have a mobile device, can I please ask you to switch it to silent or better still, turn it off altogether? We have quite a packed agenda again ahead this evening. We've got four papers to get through. So given that this is a very heavy week in terms of policy committee scrutiny and other events, I will be trying to keep strictly to time this evening. First of all, the first item on our agenda is, do I have any apologies or deputy members, please?
Thank you, Jaya. Apologies for assets received from councillor Fern. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Everybody else is present? Thank you. Do I have any declarations of interest? Councillor Warwick?
Please, Chairman. Just my usual declaration as a member of Hampshire County Council and executive member of climate change at the county, which may be relevant to the papers this evening.
Thank you very much, Councillor Warwick. I don't have any chairperson's announcements this evening. So we'll move directly on to item four, which is the minutes. Have we all had a chance to look at the minutes? And are we happy to agree them? Yes, agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. I believe that we have one member of the public who'd like to speak to us this evening. I apologize, Mr Tate. I didn't get a chance to ask you if there was a specific item that you'd like to speak to, whether you'd like to speak now or speak later.
I'm not in time for I'm not in time for speaking.
Yes, please do, Mr Tate.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to address the committee. It's mainly a postscript from last meeting. So I hope it doesn't come over as a whinge. But I did speak at the last committee meeting in reference to the air quality briefing update and issues of electric taxis. And it's just to observe that today, John Boardman, the only driver with an electric taxi, hasn't been contacted. It is a lonely pursuit being a taxi driver. And I think he's got some really valuable insights. John doesn't go to the taxi drivers forum. So I appreciate that councillor Williams may be attending. But I do think there is an opportunity there in very practical terms to understand how taxis, which actually represent quite a few of the traffic movements in central Winchester, how things can be done to enhance the air quality. Now, whilst I'm here on air quality, I just wanted to pick up the fact that I addressed the council's cabinet on the city bridge, partly because of the danger that the city bridge. But as I think I said last time, I did look through the walking strategy for Winchester. And to encourage people to get out of their cars and to walk, which is healthy for them and healthy for the environment. I do feel that the authority needs to look in practical terms, how life can be made better for pedestrians. And the city bridge is an absolutely fascinating issue. Because although it's a scheduled ancient monument, it is a bridge and it should serve its purpose to pedestrians. And really rounding up on that, as someone who probably walks 98% of my journeys are done by foot, pavements which seem so mundane and pedestrian. It is crucial. And the overall benefits of getting these things right for pedestrians will get people out of their cars. And I appreciate there's some cabinet member decisions on issues relating to movement of vehicles through Winchester, which I applaud, trying to make it more pedestrian friendly. And I think it's good to deter motorists from coming there. So sorry if that seems a bit of a ramble and a bit whingey. But hopefully, it's all meant with good intent. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you very much, Mr Tate. And I do recall you speaking at our last meeting. And I do believe that David Ingram at the time had said he would reach out to Mr Boardman. Mrs Adey, can I ask you to take that up with David Ingram, please?
Excellent, officer.
I think that was affirmative.
Yes, thank you. Please, I'll take it up. Thank you. And I apologize to Mr Tate.
And with regard to the pavements, Mr Tate. We currently have in council Westwood, the Chair of the Winchester Walking Strategy Group here, who's very passionate about pavements making it safer to walk, make safer routes. So I'm sure he's also listened to your comments and may want to speak to you. Is that okay, Mr Tate?
Thank you, Member.
Thank you. Right, we will therefore move straight on then, if we may, to our first main item or substantive item, our first paper, item six, which is a report, a review of Meadowside and Winchester Sport and Leisure Park provision. I believe that Mr Robbins, you're going to be introducing... Oh, no, I apologize. I believe councillor Cleary, then, you're going to be introducing the paper to us. And I'd like to welcome both you, Mr Robbins, the committee, and also our representative, Alison Lefred. I don't know your surname. Norman, I apologize. Alison Norman from Everyone Active, who manage both the facilities for us. So councillor Cleary, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Chair, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm very pleased to bring this report to the policy committee as it provides me with the opportunity to share the outcomes that have been achieved for our residents by the council's new Winchester Sport and Leisure Park and also Meadowside Leisure Centre, both now operated by Everyone Active. As you know, the contract we have with Everyone Active includes a number of key performance indicators that we monitor regularly with them and report at the advisory board meetings. In addition, our health improvement manager reviews data from Sport England on our residents' level of physical activity, which can be seen to be improving, and compares very well to other Hampshire local authorities. Both Winchester Sport and Leisure Park and Meadowside have seen an increase in people using the centres. And this is over a period when there were still COVID restrictions in place at times. And so being able to offer a full programme was not always possible. Yet, despite these challenges, the centres have seen over 400,000 people visit in the past nine months. To ensure a wide range of people from across the district are able to enjoy these facilities, concessions are also offered and a varied programme of sports and activities is run for different groups and abilities. And I know from attending last year the personal best Paralympic event, what a fantastic day it was and how much it was enjoyed by all. And the Everyone Active team and the many volunteers and their participants, they thought it was a marvelous day. So I think you can agree that over the past year, there is much to be proud of in what has been achieved at both the Winchester Sport and Leisure Park and Meadowside Leisure Centre. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Cleary. Mrs Robbins, did you want to add anything before we go into it? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, just some points of detail to follow on from the introduction. And it was to highlight the Everyone, sorry, the physical activity data and to just highlight that we are seeing an improvement and an increase of people who are inactive and fairly active into our active group, which is, as I say, compares very well with the other Hampshire authorities. And we are second out of those in that performance. And we are in the top three of the least, of the ones with the lowest activity rates as well. And it was also mentioned about the advisory board and just to say that that met only a couple of weeks ago on the 15th of February as well. And at 2.10, I just wanted to make a point of clarification and to apologize for an error. I had suggested that there would be a presentation, an appendix for the data that I have now been able to include in the report, though that wasn't necessary. So apologies for that error there. And then finally, just to comment on how some of the information has been provided around the geographical distribution of people attending. That is based on postcode data and has been grouped into those sort of broad areas. But I know that there is finer detail available at postcode level for that. And I think they were just the other points of detail I wanted to add. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I'm actually delighted to have this paper in front of us. I seem to be getting a lot of hustle and feedback from my mic. Thank you. Sorry about that. I just needed to change microphone. No, I'm really pleased to see this paper come to this committee. I mean, it was such a substantial investment by the city council in our sporting facilities. And I think it's important for us as a scrutiny committee in health and wellbeing, as well as the environment, to actually look at how well these facilities are meeting our strategic goals around best sports and wellbeing. So I'm pleased that we have this paper for us today. Does anyone have any questions? Would anyone like to start? Councillor Westwood, maybe you're first.
Thank you, Chair. Just a question on some of the data, actually. You talked about the breakdown of the data by postcode being available. Have you done any analysis of that data to understand if some of the less privileged areas, and that's both areas in the city, are actually using the facilities in line with other areas of the city?
Hi. Question. We have done some analysis. We gather data through, when people come into the centre and they've got a card, and we have all of their demographic data. So we're able to take quite a scientific approach and just get that into a software system. And we do have a graph which is presented at the larger board that is to attach that presentation. But that presentation is based on the website. So we're finding that around 30% of values has come from the SO20 postcode, 25% from SO22, and then 23% from SO23. So there is a small percentage of those other postcodes. But that's the large majority of our users. So probably to answer your question, we probably need to do some more work on making sure that we reach those groups. Because although it's only, you know, a couple of percent, that's a lot, still a lot of people. So our sort of health and wellbeing plans, that sports development plan, which has been co-developed with council offices, will start to talk to those groups. The way that I see that working is that we need to engage with some of the key groups in those areas just so that we can train and design programmes, like the design activities that are required and are likely to attract people into the centre. So I think we've done quite a lot of work. I think we're still less than 12 months into the opening. You know, we've got some good data to go on. I do think there's a bit more work to do to make an even bigger impact.
Thank you very much, Alison. Do we have any other questions? Sorry, Frank. Mr Councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, there's two questions particularly that I'd like to ask. Not quite sure I'm asking yourself or you guys. First one, very early days, there were complaints about the people not answering telephones at reception. What measures are being taken to correct that issue? Because it's certainly by the number of emails I was receiving, quite clearly is generating a lot of frustration, email numbers coming in. Second question, you said 400,000 visits. Is that visits, individual visits or visitors? It could be quite different. I mean, a visitor could be there several times and have them visits. So which are we talking about? And my third question, if I may, is about the physiotherapy. Recently, I had to do a course of physiotherapy in the Winchester Hospital. And I talked about doing some water therapy. And the comment that came back was that they were charging £69 an hour, which was prohibitive. Could you comment on that, please?
Thank you. Good questions. And the first one, you know, I've got some really good news about the telephone. We have, we did get in the data, as you know, the same to Rosie Barrett. It was very busy when we first opened. We have extra resource there now. We measure the metrics on a daily basis and there are KPIs for the team. So our aim is to answer 100% of those calls. I think, to be completely honest, when we opened, I think we were probably around 50 or 60%, which is very, you know, this is probably shocking. But we have made some massive inroads into improving that. And we're now at the 85 to 90% and we are still improving. It might seem a very basic thing to be able to do. But when you have, you know, queue of customers and that you might not always be able to pick up the phone, we've got backup power services now picking up those phones. So the improvement is visible. And hopefully, you've not received any kind of further level of complaints that you have. So it's very much improved.
What waiting time are you getting for?
Waiting time for people to answer the call. So it will ring for a certain amount of time and then go to ask, you know, if they want to be transferred to a different extension. So what we aim to answer the calls, I think it's five or six rings. And then it will trigger a KPI, basically. So the aim is to pick that call up within five or six rings. And your next question is around visits. So this is the amount of footfall through the building, basically. And so individual customers, we track. And I think you've got some KPIs in the junior report there. This is the amount of people scanning through our test sites, so for those events and swimming lessons and everybody that will pass through those gates. Visitors.
You don't want to be a digital question.
I'd have to check that to certainly get that to you on that off the top of my head. Okay. I think our average visit is a bit one or two a week. Sorry?
A physiotherapy question.
Physiotherapy question. I'd probably need a little bit more detail on that because I think that pricing is probably referring to a private hire of the whole pool. But we do have several arrangements with local physios, i.e. whether they want to share a pool space or hire it outright. Or we do offer, you know, concessionary pricing, exception for that as well. So I probably need a bit more detail to take that away.
I can give you a bit more detail. I was a national health patient referred by Winchester to Salem Road. Now, I was there for a national health patient and Salem Road Physiotherapist gave me that quote and prices.
And they wanted to hire the whole of the pool?
I have no idea whether they've been hiring the whole pool or they just wanted the access to it. I mean, a pool can take 10 patients at a time. I just, to me, the price that they quoted was, well, I hesitate to say it, but ridiculous.
Yeah, I don't recall a price of £69. That's certainly not the cost of the hire of the pool. So I'm wondering if that's the cost on to you with the cost of the physio on top, maybe. I don't know. I don't know, perhaps. But there are other options for people that want to use hydrotherapy. We do have classes. And if you've got a physiotherapy programme, you've already seen a physio and you're able to get into the water and do your own exercises. We have self-directed exercise. You come in, bring your programme, there's six other people in the pool and you just pay for a visit, which is much more accessible perhaps for most people. So there are different options. Happy for you to contact me if it's for yourself, if it's for somebody from your ward that you're interested about, you know, I'm happy for you to contact me.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you for your answer. We're getting quite a lot into the very detail. I think what I take away from that, though, is perhaps what we need is a very clear policy or a clear pricing structure around the use of the hydrotherapy pool, including concessions and different options to people. So that we make that facility potentially amenable to people across, you know, the socio-economics structure, if that's possible.
Certainly take that away. Thank you.
Do I have any more questions? Okay. I think John Bee, Jan. Also councillor... Councillor Tippett Cooper. And then we'll come to councillor Warwick. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Warwick. Very quick question from me. I suppose two questions really is around, picked up from councillor Westwood's sort of theme of question. I mean, is there any sense that pricing at the moment at the leisure centre is a barrier to people using it from sort of more deprived areas? And is there any plan to kind of improve uptake of usage for people who live in those areas? And but also to say as well, astonishingly well done, the results overall. I think it's been hugely successful. We'll get to that in debate.
Thank you. Good question. And just with regards to pricing, core pricing is still protected. Obviously, it needs to be approved by council. And we have a proposal this year is to actually increase pricing by less than inflation. The inflation is obviously increasing all the time. So we haven't passed those costs on to the customer. And so we will, we will kind of protect those prices along with the council. Just answering your question about pricing as a barrier. I think, you know, Everyone Active tenders to the operation system. We did have a pricing structure, a pricing structure when we built the contract. We have to be mindful of making sure it's accessible, but also being able to protect some of those community services that we deliver by charging mainly for people that can afford it. It's a real balance. And we still have the Saver Card, the council Saver Card, which is really good value for money for customers. It really brings pricing down for people. We have the very successful 50 Plus Club. And those prices are very, very good and they have a whole range of activities. So I think we probably need to, you know, look at the information that's out there on the website and make sure that people know exactly what's on our firm, promote those things just to make sure that people, you know, don't think that pricing is a barrier. There are options for people. We also run lots of free activities and tasters and things with people. So hopefully, the combination of those things will tempt people in, continue to tempt people in.
Councillor Warwick? Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Actually, my question's around pricing structures as well. Firstly, has the rise in gas prices, is that going to affect your sort of fixed pricing structure? Because I guess one of your biggest costs will be the cost of heating the pool. I know you have solar panels, but it will presumably run on gas, boy, this as well. So that's my first question. And the second is, many of you will have seen how well Winchester City Paving Swimming Club did in the recent Hampshire Championships. I was really pleased to see that some of the events were held at Winchester. Do you still have the community covenant? So do you have a protective pricing and access structure for our community clubs? Whether that is swimming, that's one I know well. I know that was perhaps in your initial contract. So maybe you could explain how that is working and how much access our local swimmers are getting to the pool? Thank you.
Yeah, obviously, utility pricing is a huge challenge for every business. Particularly as your operators who are huge consumers of energy. We have submitted our pricing increases, but the contract is written in such a way that there is a kind of cap on what we do with pricing. The core pricing is protected and that's negotiated with council offices and presented at the cabinet, I presume. So there is some protection there, but it's a difficult one. We can't pass the cost on to customers necessarily because it would just be a huge barrier for them coming in, into the building. So we have to balance pricing just to encourage people to continue to come in. So it's a difficult question. I wish I had a solution there. But yeah, we have to increase pricing, but not to those levels. In terms of, you said, community covenant. We don't have that sort of arrangement. But what we've done with the sort of local city pavers is we've reaped pricing structure for them for the next two years. So when we transfer, they run apart, we've reaped price and that are based on their hire, which they were happy with. And that will remain in place until next year. And then we will see how things are going, you know, if it gives the club a chance to recover after the pandemic. And they seem happy with their access at the moment and the amount of pool space they have. So I certainly haven't had any negative comments or, you know, any big concern from the club. So yeah, we're delighted that they've settled in. We're sponsoring a league team as well this year, which is, they get free gym access and pool access to train. So there's eight or nine athletes from the club there.
Thank you again, Alison, for great answers. I don't want to carry on too long with this because we do have more to do. I can't sit home and look like you do about the question.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'll keep it brief. So I was very lucky enough to sit in on the board meeting the other day. So obviously, lots of points were covered in that. Just two very quick points. I just wondered if we could just cover off was, obviously, the staffing and cleanliness thing was discussed at the board with the showers and reception areas. Obviously, you said that was something you were working on. Just wanted an update on that. Because I think, if I remember right, you said there were new staffs starting and that was a few weeks ago now. And then just secondly, obviously, at that meeting as well was mentioned, the links with our armed forces. Obviously, today, we've renewed our armed forces covenant. And obviously, our emergency service as well with access to discounts, whether that be military or blue light as well. Outreach was mentioned on that. And I just wondered if you'd have any further thoughts on that process as a... I know it wasn't too long ago, but hopefully, it was something that was of importance that may well have sparked an idea.
So your first question was around staffing. So yeah, we've had some challenges in terms of recruitment. So we have a couple of vacancies still, but we have six new staffs in the last couple of weeks. So things are starting to improve in that way. I think with the little lifting of the self-isolation restrictions, that will really help us. But it's still, people are still becoming ill, aren't they? You know, we still have that illness. So it's still a challenge, but it's improving. In terms of your comments about the military, I haven't been much further forward, but I did agree to meet with you and discuss it further. I haven't had any contact with Worthy Down, which is one of the kind of projects that we were working with just to see what the uptake was like. And I'm happy to extend that type of arrangement if we need to do it a bit longer. But yeah, I'm happy to meet with you and discuss it further. I'm saying further updates on that. Okay.
I'm just going to ask my couple of questions I have, one is for officers and one for you and Alison. I know in the report that the report wrote clearly said that this isn't looking at the financial side of the agreement that is appropriate for this committee. And I just wanted to know who will be reviewing that? Who will be doing the scrutiny of how are that contracts working? If this is put in or this lady?
Thank you. So the financial review of the contract falls to the senior officers, which is the team you have with you, with Alison and myself. We're currently doing the first year review at the moment. So we're having a look at all of the... doing the first year review at the moment. So we're having a look at all of the things closely. And that will be reported back through as we either track or not, depending on how we find the figures I can give now.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Sadie. The other question, Alison, is we, we have both Winchester Sports and Richard Park, which is obviously a brand new centre. We also have Meadows Side in this report, a much smaller space, much fewer number of people, the figures are much lower. But there's still a significant amount of investment in terms of councils' budget going into Meadows Side. So I wondered, you know, sort of, how do you feel Meadows Side is going? Is there anything, is there any benefit to the council of having everyone active managing both centres? Is there anything that can be shared between them? Is there any benefits to our residents of having you manage both centres? Can they swap between the two, et cetera? So if you perhaps could give the, continue on that.
So we're really pleased with the way that the refurbishment has gone at Meadows Side. It looks nice and shiny and new. And it's a really lovely community centre. See if everyone's visited. But I would encourage you to go and have a look. It's had a real place lift. And if you look at the figures, we are starting to see some real improvements there. It's a really good gym offering. We have this nineteen ninety nine. And we've got a little, you know, nicely gym equipment, double the size it was before, refurbished studios. So yeah, we're very, very pleased with how things are going. And it just goes from strength to strength, I think, there. Nice location. So I'm not quite sure on your second part of that question. So if you wouldn't mind clarifying, that would be great.
I suppose the question I was asking is, is there any benefit to residents of having the same provider looking after both of our main facilities?
Thank you. So if you're a member at Winchester, you can use Meadows Side. Basically, so if you're, if you're working in Whiteley and you're living in Winchester or vice versa, you can use those facilities. And not only that, they do have access to our local contracts in other areas. So I think, from my perspective, that helps us keep, retain our members, offering them a little bit more, and that flexibility. These days, people like to work out in different places and use different facilities. The mix is quite different as well. The feel's quite different. So I think, yeah, it's a really nice mix of facilities for the district.
Thank you very much. Councillor Wilson, if you have the last question, we'll move on to debate. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, for indulging me. I've got a question. I've got some asks I might make off line through you, Mrs Robbins. But I've got a question on page eighteen, which is related to graph one, where we're showing where the users have come from. And we've got forty-eight percent from, I think, the city and thirty-one percent from Stockbridge. And I just want, that, that kind of ratio doesn't feel right to me. So I just wondered if we've looked at that and understand whether it was a sample size problem or something else. It just doesn't feel like it must, it could be representative. That's a simple question.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. You're absolutely right, because the figures that I've given, the thirty percent, the twenty-five and twenty-three from our actual, our database. So this moving communities was a sport England survey that was sent out to our database. But since then, things have changed quite a lot. So this was, this was done, I think, probably last six or eight months ago. So we, since then, we've gathered a much larger, I think we've got around thirty thousand pieces of data in our database. So it's a much, you're right, it's a much bigger sample. And so I would trust, not distrust, but the figures that I've given you, and the ones we presented, the advisory group are probably a bit more accurate since this was developed.
If I may also add, I think when we're looking at the sort of postcode analysis, I think Stockbridge is probably the name of the wider sort of area it covers. And it includes a number of communities within that, which fall within our district, which might make more sense. So I think you would be titled a bit more accurately to reflect our communities. Okay. So what I'm now going to do is give us just ten minutes, a maximum of ten minutes, to debate, because we do want to move on to some of the other papers. Who would like to start us off? Councillor Pearson, give me any half ten minutes.
I recognize what you're saying, Chair, and I'll, I'll make this very brief. But first, congratulations on the report that we've wrote. It's a, which it would, too, but it, it's a worthwhile report as far as it goes. There's always a bite to that sort of statement, I guess. I'm a bit disappointed about the rather thin treatment of the Meadows Side Centre. In some ways, while we had already a leisure centre in River Park and the present leisure centre for our end is a replacement, Meadows Side didn't. And it's a growing population, growing town. So I would like in future to see more detail about what is actually happening down in Meadows Side. The other issue that I had generally is that I'm delighted that by the way, the present regime didn't manage to cancel this. It's one of the three big projects that we had. It wasn't cancelled and I'm delighted the results, I'm glad the management. And I recognize it was not an easy start. Well done. Thank you.
Councillor Pearson, thank you. And I'm also delighted the current administration have managed to get the centre finished on time and in budget during the pandemic. So who would like to carry on with this? Councillor Tippit Cooper.
I'm not going to make any political comments. I'm just going to say congratulations to everybody involved, really, because given the circumstances that you started off with, I think this is really quite exceptional performance. And it's brilliant. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, councillor Tippit Cooper. Councillor Westwood?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, quite briefly along the lines of councillor Tippit Cooper. So I think it's a really great start to the leisure centre. Well done. A couple of comments there. You talked about, I talked about the numbers. And I think it is worthwhile going that level down. I know you've got numbers of initiatives and so on going on, but it's worth understanding exactly how that's driving, who is driving into the centre and who not bringing in. So it's really quite nice to go. I know this is not financial, but I would worry about the overall viability of the gas and electricity prices, energy prices going up and the impact on that as a business model. So that really needs to be picked up. And the final point, there are a few niggles around that don't come out in this paper. I know that bikes being stolen outside, but I know one was stolen last night. And this is some with the booking and the releasing of the slots, we've booked, which is fifty million per minute. So they're not, not coming out in sequence. So there's a few little bits like that. I've done a really good job.
Thank you, councillor Westwood. Mrs Sadie, I'm sure you've picked up the issue on the increased energy costs. And I know that councillor Todd has already started to look at the bike parking and more secure bike parking. So do we have any more to go at councillor?
Yes, just really briefly. Thank you, Chairman. And just speaking as, at the time, one of the cabinet members on this very committee, I'm really pleased to see that the centre was built. And it's fantastic. I've had a head of tour. My PTU would be to make sure you stay in touch with those community groups that use it. That's really important. And also the military, I'm really aware, we have a huge military presence in Winchester. And I'm not sure how much they, they do use the leisure centre, but if you could prepare that in mind, that would be fantastic. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair.
Do I have anybody else? Councillor Clear, I know you'd like to speak, but are there any other members in the committee? Councillor Clear, thank you.
Very quickly, thank you, Chair. Having worked with Alison and the team for nearly a year now, yes, there have been challenges, but it's a brilliant facility. And I must say, I'd love you to go and look at the Meadows Side Leisure Centre as well, because the refurbishment is very good indeed, and it's been well received. But yes, there were a few hiccups. There always are with new things. But Alison and her team have got on with the issues. And I, like so many of you, and I thank you so much, sing their praises because they've done a very good job, both at Winchester and at Meadows Side. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Clear. So I'm just going to wrap up this item. Thank you very much, Alison, for coming to speak to us. Thank you, Mrs Robbins, and also Alison, if you've had input into the report. I think it was valuable to bring it to the committee today. I can only congratulate you as well on everything that's been done. I'm an active user of the Sports and Leisure Park. In fact, I dropped my private membership for a different club to become, to become a member. And I think it's a tremendous sign for money. We're lucky, both as a councillor and as a resident, to have it right here in Winchester. I'd actually like to take a parking. That's one of my own personal hobbies, in that I think it's too good a deal for a lot of people. I'm not sure everybody there is using the leisure centre, but I don't know that that's something that perhaps will be looked at going forward. But we've, you know, we have noted this, there are a huge number of issues. I'm sure officers have put them down. And we hope it goes on to continue success. But thank you very much. And also actually to all the officers who are involved in getting leisure centre to the point of being opened. Right. We will now move on to our next item on the agenda. So we're moving on to item seven. So item seven on the agenda is part of our reports on the carbon neutrality programme. And in the way that we've looked at both transport and energy generation, we are the third pillar of the carbon neutrality programme, which is our housing, our carbon emissions from housing and our policies around that, both for the district's carbon emissions and the council's own carbon emissions. And I believe that today we have Mrs Knight helping us with this. And, sorry, Andrew, Mr Palmer, Andrew Palmer helping us as well, officers. I don't know who would like to introduce the street call. I don't know whether councillor Lenny you're going to or...
This is Knight, well.
Okay.
I'm passing over to Mr Keen.
Mr Keen's going to turn, unfortunately, it's empty. Therefore, I believe it has landed with you. Thank you.
I'm doing part of the introduction. Rich is doing the other half. So it's, it's shared too. Yes, this paper considers progress towards reducing carbon in council homes, our new build stock and initiatives within private sector housing. I'll try and cover the carbon, the council stock. And then I think Rich Hope will chip in and do a few introductory comments in terms of the new build and private sector initiatives. I think by way of introduction, almost recap it, if I can just touch on a couple of paragraphs which give a bit of background to where we are. Under three point four, you'll see we took a cabinet report called Making Homes Carbon Neutral in March last year. And that was on the back of two member TAC briefings and a presentation I did to this cabinet just about a year ago now. So, so time to move on a bit. Those recommendations, the four bullet points there are the key things. And the, and the first one is probably the top one, which is additional wall floor insulation avoids. The works we need to crack on with are dealing with empty homes. And we need to do it in such a way that we don't, we don't create any problems that we haven't already got. So of major concern to us are co-bridging, condensation, things like that. So as it says in the report, we've now managed to recruit a retrofit coordinator who's, who's working up a strategy, a risk-based strategy to make sure that those risks are minimised. Now, that isn't to say we're not going to get some of it still wrong. But I'm hoping that we will minimise that risk. But I can't emphasise enough that getting that strategy right and the approach right is key, is absolute key. So that's the first point I'd make, which we're, we're building a strategy. You're aware in the report that we've only just managed to recruit the retrofit coordinator only a couple of months ago. Unfortunately, she is also part-time. So we're, again, still struggling with resource on this. But I'm hoping that it will now gather pace, because we do have a dedicated resource, albeit part-time. The other delay we had mid of last year was to do with the procurement. You're aware that, or hopefully most people are aware, that Osborne do all the empty houses for us at the moment. So they're on fifteen-year deal with us to do empty houses and responsive repairs. And what we, what we wanted to do was make sure the same contractor did these works. We don't want two contractors working at the same time, just complicates issues. So in order to, there were concerns in terms of procurement. We can't just give Osborne another a million pounds a year and just say we'll get on with it, because that's likely to face equal challenge. So we had put a notice in the EU Journal, which again caused delays in terms of giving people, other suppliers, the opportunity to challenge or question it, which there won't any challenges, which is good. So that was the other slight stumbling what we've had in the last year or so in terms of getting things going. But I genuinely hope that the fact we've now got a dedicated resource, albeit part-time, will be the main thing that now drives us forward.
Thank you very much, Mr Palmer. Mr Botham?
Chair, thank you. Obviously, the addressing our existing council homes, being the keeper that we were allocated funding for, we also obviously have a team that work on addressing issues with the private sector housing. Obviously, our scope to influence retrofit within the private sector stock is far more restrictive than it is with our own homes. But the report does set out some of the initiatives that have, that we've been able to take part in or support. We do have Kevin Reed from that team on the line, online with us as well to pick up any questions that members may have with those, those initiatives. We also have a section in the paper that addresses the approach taken with our new build programme. So our new build programme has a very creative development strategy, aiming to build at all near to national house standards, as net zero carbon as we can. And that obviously comes with a cost. And all of our schemes are now moving forward against that development strategy, which we improved by cabinet, comes with a cost. And we assess that cost broadly increases our development cost by about twenty percent, which then in turn tests the viability of any, any of the schemes that we're bringing forward. And that hasn't prevented us bringing schemes forward, though. We are, we are progressing with a number, a number of schemes, as the report sets out. We could, obviously, one of our options are how we, how we review that viability moving forward as well. So that we do have some scope about looking at that. But we probably need to develop our experience with bringing, you know, completing some of these schemes and learning from that. Again, we have Mr Palmer on the line, who's happy to take any questions that members have with regard to that section. Just to conclude the paper, we've also had a commentary around the emerging local plan. And that will be critical to how we can start to influence that private sector issue that I touched on earlier. The local planning team have obviously issued their issues in options paper. They have consulted widely. And it is clear that there is broad support for carbon neutrality being at the heart of the local plan. The test will be around, again, around viability. So we have appointed consultants to complete a viability assessment. And they'll be taking account of all the things that we need to consider as far as bringing development forward. And carbon neutrality will be, will be one of those. Unfortunately, Adrian Fox is not able to be with us tonight. But he did say to me that apart from the words in the paper, we didn't really have a lot more he could say, because it is at such an early stage of, of that process. So they're obviously working, working up the policies that will need to be considered. And I think he said at the time, did the paper very well, actually, that it is that balance between wanting to be really ambitious and influencing it as much as we can. But we can't go so far that an inspector would rule the plan as being unsound. So that's, that's the challenge they face. Have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Botham. And also, welcome to Mr Reed and Mr Palmer online. So Andrew, I can't see your surname, I'm afraid.
Sorry.
Sorry. Okay. So I apologize for referring to you as the wrong Andrew previously. Committee, before we ask our questions, I just wanted to make sure that you had actually looked at what we're being asked to comment on this evening. Obviously, you know, this issue is complex. We don't, we have the issue of looking at our existing stock and how we retrofit that. We have the issue of looking at our new builds and the additional cost of making those carbon zero. And there is actually a question would be asked... And there is actually a question we'd be asked to consider, which asks us to think about whether or not we want to increase the percentage we charge new tenants if they have a carbon zero home because of the lower energy costs, whether we want to change affordability criteria, we're asked to comment on that. We're also being asked to comment on sort of the limitations on the council ability to drive things in the private sector, again, through a retrofitting programme, and also the limitations on the council plan. So when we're asking our questions, we come and try to debate. Can I make sure that we are thinking about those issues and commenting on those issues specifically? Because that's what we're being asked to do. So who would like to start us off, please? Mr Botham, have I missed something?
No, Chair, I missed something actually, by way of introduction. And I just want to make the point that by way of those questions and the recommendations, we're certainly not recommending that that's something that we want to push on. It's really highlighting the fact that viability is a real concern for us. You know, costs are increasing, there are a number of ways we could address that. A higher rate could be one, but certainly we're not coming to the table recommending that that be a firm proposal for us. So just to get members to think that we saw that as a solution.
Thank you, Mr Botham, for the clarity. I'm sorry, if I confuse things, my view is that we should at least talk about it as a potential. So who would like to start us off? That's fine.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr Botham, for following on. It's a really easy paper to read, so and there's not a detail in there, so that's fantastic. I've got two sort of questions that come to mind because you're talking about Winchester city council homes and then comparing that with the private sector. What sort of numbers are we talking about? I'm guessing there are about 50,000 homes across the district. So what percentage of houses are council-owned properties? And what are we looking at that are privately owned, privately rented or run by housing associations? I think it's 4.2, 4.3, looking at percentages. But how do the numbers sort of compare, just to give us an idea? Because I'm guessing if we can control the carbon neutrality of our own stock, but how much of a dent does that make in the carbon neutrality of houses across the district as a whole? That's my first sort of question. And then the second is the risk around costs. You know, I guess in cost inflation, material shortage is running at 17%, which is significant and is going to make some of those challenges difficult to deliver. But also, is there a skills and material shortage which will compound that? And should we be flagging up the risks in this paper more? So those are my two questions, thank you.
Chair, we have 5,000 of our own stock with plans to build a third of 1,000. So that broadly sets it into context. So a fairly small impact overall compared to the stock of the district, but an important one. And so the paper does also set out the difference between private stock and social housing stock as well. So we are seeing, so we're at a higher base already. So there is a bigger challenge based on private sector stock overall. With regard to the question around risk, I think that's a very fair question. We are obviously seeing costs increase on almost every construction tender that we're seeing at the moment. And obviously with the current issues that we're facing internationally, that would almost certainly have an impact as well. Probably too early to say to all the extent, but certainly it would be a risk. With regard to the risk in relation to skills, I think the proposals that we're including around the retrofitting of our stock now, I mean, Mr Kingston will know that far better than me, but the relatively straightforward fabric-first approach that we're recommending here. So we've got the skills to do that, we think the skills are in place to do that. If that work and further work in the private sector suggests a certain type of technology is the solution, that's where a skill shortage could be. So if there was a massive drive for heat pumps, for example, the capacity for the country to deliver that could struggle. But I don't know whether Mr Kingston would have anything to add.
I think adding to that, our other concern is materials. And in terms of what we might end up specifying, whether or not there's going to be problems getting the actual materials as well. So, you know, if we end up specifying something like a proprietary thing you can get from Wicks or whatever, then fine, if you can get it. But we're looking at more complex materials like that. We're trying to find materials that are very good insulators but don't present virus. And when you start doing that, you narrow your options down quite dramatically. So I think there could be an issue with materials as well, unfortunately. You know, in terms of the work being carried out, we will be using Osborne. So they are upskilling now in terms of being able to comply with the KAS 2035 retrofit standards. So we think that will come, but I think there will still be skill shortages. I mean, inevitably, and like Richard has said, particularly when you get into heating systems and things like that, trying to get gas engineers now for gas appliances is hard enough. Trying to get air source heat pump engineers is a lot harder. So we are anticipating quite significant problems, but let's be positive.
Thank you, Mr Kingston and Mr Botham. So councillor Kern, and then we'll come to you, councillor Pearson.
Thank you very much, Chair. It's kind of the question around the fact that we're quite an incredible historic city. Our boards are incredibly historic as well. And obviously that provides limitations when it comes to retrofitting, especially when it comes to double glazing and bits and pieces of that. And obviously that makes a massive difference. I know it's a conversation I have a lot with a lot of people in my ward about what we'd like to put double glazing in, but we can't. Is there something that we can think about as a council moving forward in how we address those situations when it comes to our historic buildings and buildings that make it difficult, that would enable it to be a bit easier for someone maybe to put a wood frame window in, but instead of it being specified as single glazing, it can be not. I know it's a very difficult subject because it's lots of historic elements to it. But obviously with a lot of historic housing in the district, that's obviously a big element that's going to preclude us from doing all the retrofitting work.
Thank you, councillor Kern. It's also partly a planning question, I'm sure, conservation areas. Who would like to attempt to tackle that?
I can try and answer the first bit. I mean, yes, we have an ongoing, be polite, battle with conservation issues. But, and our problem is, you know, even where we try and retain the original windows or try and keep as much of the originals we can, we've looked at secondary glazing, but again, tenants don't like secondary glazing, you know, it's quite a difficult one. It's another barrier to being able to open the window. Speaking personally, yes, you must rather have a double glazed window, timber, PVC, whatever, than secondary glazing. So it is a problem we do have, particularly in conservation areas within Winchester in terms of what we can offer people.
Thank you, Mr Kingston. But I think maybe it is something to note, this paper's coming from housing, but obviously there are issues again around planning. And with paper talks about the local plan as we move forward with development, but we haven't spoken about how planning restrictions affect our ability to actually do the carbon reduction in houses. So maybe that's something we need to incorporate, Mr Botham.
Chair, yes, I will take that discussion back to Mr Botham, Mr Finkston, the planning team. Certainly, we have had discussions in our own new builds, some of the new build schemes that are highlighted in the paper around things like orientation, where orientation is really important for passive housing and heating, but really important from planning to round the street scene and the way properties face each other. So what gives first, you know, that is the source of discussions that the strategic planning team are having at the moment around what finally goes in that local plan. But then it will need to be compromised as well.
Thank you very much, Mr Botham. Councillor Pearson, welcome.
Mr Pearson. I've got another question, but first, I think this is a solid point. I feel I owe one of the council, thank you very much for that, and thank you, Andrew, for this. A couple of queries though about this, it's not negative queries, probably recognizing issues. The first one, you mentioned paragraph 3.7, that you're already able to deal with a couple of voids that can void. I don't understand that. But how many properties are you talking about, out of the over 5,000 properties we actually own? So that's the first question. The second one, we're back to the second paragraph. I'm pretty concerned about the fact, you seem to have spent in that paragraph, the work you're doing, a considerable amount of void by properties, which equals empty properties, where you're putting in the improved wall floor and ceiling with loft insulation, and then you're doing a change in the heat system, heating system, grid doors and draft roof and mortar. I don't understand the reason for that because you need golf to get an efficient upgrade. The last one that I want to raise at this time is the 4.4 suggests you're also dealing with housing association as a result. But am I correctly thinking that, or are you just dealing with council properties? Which, I don't know how many housing association properties there are, Andrew, but it's, I know it's, there must be a lot more than 5,000. No one knows. But it's a query, and if I can squeeze a last one in.
Councillor Pearson.
It is possibly short answer. The problem if you're building a new home, which has got all bells and whistles, how are you dealing with the building regulations which don't allow that?
If I can try and answer your questions in turn, I might need you to come back and repeat that one. The first one, the number of voids you get a year, we get about 350 voids a year, about 8% in stock. And of those, like the general percentage of the stock, 40% will be EPC band deal or below. So those are the ones we're targeting. In terms of the second paragraph, what we're saying, and we covered this, I think, in more detail in the previous report, we're focusing on fabric first. That doesn't mean that we're going to do all the other elements, although a lot of people promote whole house refit, which is doors, windows, the whole shebang. Where we've looked at this, we've already got PVC double glazed windows. There's very benefit in changing those double glazed windows, more double glazed windows or even triple glazed windows. The benefits are reducing all the time. And it's the same with heating systems, we've got a lot of imported carbon within a gas boiler we maybe fitted two years ago, do we really want to take that out and put a heat pump in there? Our view is not. We leave those in the existing programmes, so the boiler will get replaced in its normal cycle. Windows will get replaced in their normal cycle, as long as they're modern double glazed windows as best we can or even secondary glazed option if we have to go that route. So the existing programmes we've got will carry on running and they will be, you know, we're hoping to improve the energy efficiency as time moves on. We're not going to do it all at the same time. One of the other issues with windows is particularly blocks of flats. If you start replacing windows in blocks of flats where you've got leaseholders, then you come into all sorts of legal complications in terms of what you can and can't do, you know, and who should be charged for them. So it does generate a lot of other issues in terms of changing windows as an example. But things like roofs, well, we're not going to change the roof, we'll change the roof when it needs doing. Otherwise, we could be, I'd hate to be accused of wasting money, when a lot of it would be in very good and sound condition, not beyond economic repair. So could you repeat the building regulation question again? Is that your last question?
That's right, so the building regulations are, people say, something years out of date. And whilst they are present, they're doing a lot for a very safe space housing we want to build, a passive house, for example. Or you need improvements in passing that you, there must be some process. So how are we dealing with that issue? I understand regulations may not come through until the end of next year. So how are we dealing with it now?
I think the building regulations set the minimum standards, but they do allow us to go above that, councillor Pearson. So it is perfectly possible for us to build passive house homes. There are issues with building regs in terms of some of the requirements, which are frankly ridiculous in an airtight, yes, they are, in an airtight home, for example. But, you know, I think we can deal with those, we can certainly be building to these very high standards. And there are also examples in other places where they're already building passive houses for council tenants. Thank you, councillor Lenny.
Please, councillor, and if you are confirming that buildings are minimum standard, I've been trying to persuade you of that for the last two years.
Thank you, councillor Pearson. And I do believe councillor Lenny were already building way above the building regulations standards in a lot of our new properties, perhaps he'd like to say so. Yeah, that's correct, I don't know if, I'm wondering if Andrew Palmer wanted to come in and explain the standards that we're building our new homes to. Yes, thank you, Mr Palmer. Can you join us just for a few minutes to explain?
Certainly. Yes, it's quite difficult because I'm getting a lot of feedback this end, but just to give you a very brief rundown, we are trying to achieve passive house on all of our new developments because that really is the gold standard in trying to meet the net zero carbon challenge. And a passive house really is looking at limiting the amount of energy used to heat a home and heat water as well. So in building that to that standard, we are making a significant contribution to the net zero carbon challenge that the councils, that the council set itself. Where we can't achieve passive house standard, we go for a slightly lower standard called ACB, and that's set out in the report as well. So that's just a slightly lower standard, but still a significant improvement over what is achieved in the private sector at the moment and is set out within our building regulations.
Thank you very much, Mr Palmer. I'm going to go to councillor Pearson, but I just wanted to follow up on the void policy. To me, it makes absolute sense to do the work when the property is void because then we're not keeping people who need a home out of a home and we're not disrupting artisans' lives. The only question I have is obviously our carbon neutrality target for the district is 2024. I think by just doing a rough calculation of the numbers, we've got about 2,000 council properties that fall into the bands that we're prioritising. If we're doing 100 per year, potentially that's 10 years, 20 years, do you anticipate that we might be able to speed up the process or do more in future years once we get our policy in place?
The original intention was always to have a two-pronged tact, do half of it in void if we could, and then try and encourage another 100 willing tenants to see if they have it done while it's in situ. To be honest, my own view is, I think they underestimate the disruption of the work we're talking about. We're talking about all the internal finishes, basically. So having said that, we are looking at various proprietary systems where they say they can come in and do it a room at a time. And it might still be a go, but you're right, we have to up the numbers if we're going to, you know, do the 2000 by 2030 anyway. Void is only one strand of it, really.
We did conduct a survey last year of our tenants who had interest in perhaps putting themselves forward for a retrofit programme. And we did have quite a lot of interest actually, so we can revisit that and we send that schedule out, that survey out to see if we can get some very willing volunteers that maybe we could then, that tenant would be able to promote, whether or not it was too much for them. But it is really important that we take the tenants with us on our journey as well. Thank you, Mrs Knight. I think perhaps with rising cost of living, rising energy prices, people may be more amenable to some disruption if it could impact on their fuel bills. Councillor Pearson.
Yes, thank you. So I'm a big believer that actually when you're facing a really huge challenge, one of the hardest things is getting started. So the fact that you've done a lot of work preparing to move and thinking about it and understanding the risk, I think is a good thing. And the fact that we're starting to move is a great thing. But I've got a question here, really around just how much are we going to achieve? And it's sort of related to the question that councillor Ferguson just raised. We've set aside 15.7 million to retrofit council homes over 10 years. There's an estimate that says we, on current terms, we're going to have to spend about 100 million to do the whole estate and things. So that implies that we've set aside enough to do 15, 16 odd percent of the estate roughly. So I'm wondering, what contribution are we going to see from that work? So if we, you know, start from the point of having 100% carbon emissions now, after we've spent that 16 million, what do we anticipate? we've spent that 16 million, what do we anticipate that 100% will have fallen to for the whole estate? Yeah, probably for the whole estate. Or you can look at it a different way in terms of for the houses that we've done, how much will that be reduced? A way of understanding what bang for the buck are we going to get?
Probably a difficult one to answer. The, what we're saying here very clearly as best we can is we're trying to work on band D properties and below and get them to C or above. So some we will get to C easily, some maybe B. But as you say, we've only got so much money in terms of what's already been set aside to do this and probably 15% of what we think it might need doing. I mean, the average for like a full refit, looking at national figures now, if you're going to do a whole house refit, is about £20,000 per unit. So that's where even our estimates a couple of years ago, maybe where we were saying 70, 75 million, I think it's going to be close to 100 million. And I think it will still depend even then on what we do, you know, and what we do in the different units. I mean, flats, bungalows and houses will all have different costs associated with them. Some measures we would be doing to some properties and not others. So it's very early days and it's hard for me to answer your question, to be honest. It's, we're hoping to get as close, you know, as long, far on the path as we can, but it's quite hard to answer that question.
Yeah, I knew it was a hard question. And it may be one of those things that we need to learn a bit more before we know that. But what I'm getting at there is that even a band B property is not net zero, but it's not zero. So what I'm trying to understand here is to what extent we understand already that that programme, which might get us our whole estate up to C, would be maybe what's left that hasn't been dealt with. And hence that helps inform us in terms of the extent to which we've still got more to do in some other way to get to net zero. So that's kind of what I'm trying to wrap my head around.
Yeah, and I suppose we're hoping other things kick in at the same time. I suppose I'm hoping that the grid gets decarbonised in the next 10 years, but that's a big hope. And if it's all coming into the property, the energy decarbonised at source, then well, that's great. But will it be? You know, there are very, there are big imponderables in this in terms of where we'd like to be and where we think we will be in 10 years' time. So yeah, I can't give you a different answer, I'm afraid.
If I might add to that, Chair, I think one of the important things here is that well insulated homes are also better to live in. So this isn't just around the carbon agenda, it is also about making our homes not only cheaper for our tenants to live in, but also more comfortable. We all know how uncomfortable it is to sit in a drafty room. So there are other beneficial aspects that we'll need to look at, and that is something else around trying to get most, not only most bang for our buck, carbon wise, but also achieving the maximum benefits we can for our tenants. Clearly, we don't have enough money to meet the full aspirations we have at the moment. We're certainly hoping that more government money will be forthcoming on this, and in particular that we do see much more rapid decarbonisation of our energy supplies. I think the current crisis is certainly driving us in that direction, though it may come sooner than we were originally anticipating. But that decarbonisation will be a key thing for us. And that obviously will entail moving more to electricity and away from the gas, while hydrogen may be coming into the gas supply grid. Hydrogen itself takes a lot of energy to create, so it doesn't make much sense using green electricity to create green hydrogen because you're actually throwing loads of energy away. So that electrification of homes is going to be important. And again, you need really good levels of insulation in order to achieve that because most electrical forms of heating, as Andrew will confirm, are less efficient. But on the other hand, a lot of the work we've already done, we've got the figures, you know, on what will work for our tenants financially, but there may be some adjustments we need to make around that because of the change in ratio between gas and electricity prices. We've already seen gas prices rising by about 90%, while electricity's risen by 50%. So that may change some of our tenants' calculations around whether they're now happy to move to electrical heating solutions rather than sticking with the gas. So there's quite a lot to think about there, but we do need to keep a tenant focus on this, not just around our buildings.
Thank you, councillor Lenny. I'm only going to add two more questions. So councillor Westwood, if you'd like to go ahead and add one more. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I was just hearing to your rules at the beginning about taking counter questions. My question is, because we talked about council housing a lot here, I just wanted a quick question on private housing, just your thoughts on how the initiatives that you've put into the paper may scale, but this is a big problem for you to scale on.
Mr Reed, are you able to join us? Did you hear the question?
Yes, good evening. The difficulty we have in the private sector is, of course, households, those homes are owned by private individuals. Having thoughts about the paper and on reflection, the actual situation we are in at the current time with the anticipated increase in energy costs come this April, and then again, another increase in energy costs come October, when it's been reported that the average household may be paying towards £3,000 for their fuel. It may actually encourage both owner occupiers and landlords to up the insulation in their homes, because it will probably be cheaper for them to do that. In the private sector, currently the minimum EPC whereby a property might be renting, if it is lower than E, tenants like owner occupiers do not want to pay lots of fuel. Some tenants, particularly in HMOs, do have a breath with including their utilities, but I can see landlords possibly phasing that out and placing the requirement for tenants to pay the fees rather than including it in rent. So in time, I can also see that there may be a critical mass across our districts and across the country whereby tenants call for improved energy efficiency to their homes. And so in the longer term, as the energy efficiency increases, this ultimately will help reduce the use of carbon and contribute also reduction of carbon use across the districts in order to try and have a net zero.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Reed. Do we have one last question?
Yeah.
Councillor Tipper, do we don't feel you have to?
No, I've got debate, we're in the debate, it's actually a specific question, so I might as well ask it now. I'm wondering, is there scope to offer tenants in terms of the retrofitting a sort of a quicker, low hanging fruit option in terms, because I don't know how long it takes to do a full retrofit, but is there a, you could get your particular, you know, maybe old boiler changed and that's it, and have a kind of, you know, different phases or or different types of options with time limited, with timings around them?
Sorry to reduce the carbon use and things. Yeah. Unfortunately, everything's doable, but it's what it would cost. You know, all our programmes are set up on set cycles, so boiler life we normally allow 12 years. So if we're going to start bringing the boiler life down to five years or four years, and so we're going to start changing them then, then the front ending load of costs could be quite phenomenal. I still think ideally we need to focus on fabric, we need to stop lower energy use that, you know, across the board. So whether it's to do with the heating system or poorly fitting windows or poor windows because of single glaze, it's about how do you, how do we give people the option to reduce energy use as early as we can? And it might be that, like we said earlier, that if we can get more tenants on board who want to have the works done, then we will need to look at escalating the insulation programmes. You know, so although I sounded a bit negative about that earlier, you know, it might be the best and only way to get people lower energy bills in the short term or the short term, medium term.
Thank you very much, Mr Kingston. Just before we go into the debate, I actually have one question, a chair's privilege. Mr Fox, I'm just turning to the local plan, and I know we do have ambitions and we have consulted on what can we do to place the climate emergency sort of at the forefront of our local plan, our local plan refresh. We talk about viability. How much scope does the council actually have to sort of do more in this area and the inspectors sort of not turn us down?
Of course, I'll probably give a full answer on that, and I will ask Mr Fox to update the committee on his professional assessment of that. But I think there is certainly scope for our current planning policies to be reviewed that will make a really positive contribution compared to what they can do at the moment. So and there is a willingness in the development sector to respond to that as well. So I think that's the good news as far as the local plans concerned. We're going to see change, we're seeing positive buy-in to that whole debate. I think it's just determining, it's understanding that the impact that those policy changes could have is forcing additional cost development. We've seen that from our own development, our decisions we've made have forced a 20% increase, but that may not be affordable for, in a local plan context. So that's the challenge that Mr Fox and his team are currently grappling with.
Thank you, Mr Fox, and perhaps if Mr Fox could follow on, that would be fantastic. Thank you. So we are now going to spend, again, 10 minutes in debate, if there's a huge debate, which are slightly longer, going to do two more papers tonight. Who would like to start us off? Councillor Tipper. I think this term, councillor Corrigan.
No, thank you for that. I kind of enjoyed this paper because it's been a really good set of questions and answers. So thank you for that. And I think, I know as well as anyone, the biggest challenge facing us with climate change is domestic heating and insulation. So just on your own figures, your 20,000 per house, the cost of doing Winchester's own housing stock will be around 100 million to upgrade it, assuming you can get access to every house. So that for the Winchester district, you're looking at nine, nine and a half billion pounds alone just for upgrading homes. And obviously, a significant number of those will be people who've got the money to do that themselves and will be motivated by energy costs, but a significant proportion will be people who can't afford it. So that is the massive challenge, and I face that on a Hampshire scale. So just to say that, and you know, it's a very stark point, but I think everybody's picked up on that, that well done on that paper. Thank you.
Councillor, oh, councillor Tipper Cooper and then councillor Pearson. Thank you, councillor Pearson, for keeping your strength.
No, I also, just to commend this paper, I agree with the point it was made as well, it's been well drafted, it is. It looks to me as if we've got the need for speed of the climate emergency bashing up against the sort of galactial nature of planning, legal and tenant issues with this issue generally. And I think everyone here has clearly thought very, very carefully about how to sum out that in circumstances where you have that urgency. So I just, I just wonder whether there's some sort of space for new and creative thinking about getting tenants on board. I think there's, Mrs Knight made some good comments on that, and it looks Kingston too, and looking for ways in which we can do that. And I do wonder whether a campaign and a plan around bringing tenants along would actually, would actually be quite effective, because I suspect, given the pressures and the cost of living, it would be. We were asked specifically, and to pick up councillor Ferguson's brief, about looking at the comments and commenting on specific points about some of the paper. I've just got a specific comment about 5.7, which is around looking potentially at new developments, potentially offsetting the cost of the actual tenancy with the decreased cost in energy that comes from being a higher efficient home. I kind of get that point in this section. What I'm concerned about is this whole issue isn't sort of, shouldn't be council tenants bearing the brunt of a climate emergency responsibility, it should be the whole district. Because we have this stock, it's the whole district's responsibility. So I would be reluctant to have something like that unless there was something very clear that locked in the amount of extra cost to the tenant that's offset against the energy cost. So I want to make sure that there is a, effectively, the cost of living in that new highly efficient home wasn't, didn't exceed what they otherwise would be paying in a non-efficient home, as it were, in terms of the combination of occupancy cost and energy. Sorry, very long-winded way of putting that, but it's the data. This is a massive and huge challenge indeed. It sounds like we need a lot of money as well. So I hope there are government schemes forthcoming very soon for this, and I hope we tap into them as much as we can. But good job so far. I think councillor Corrigan made the point that it's a huge challenge, but it's good we got started.
Thank you, councillor Tipper Cooper, and thank you for just saying that point. That would be my comment as well. Councillor Pearson.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, as I said earlier on, I did enjoy reading this report. It's positive, it's a useful addendum to the HRA report we've heard in council together to make a very good match, indeed, plus the carbon offsetting one which follows later. I'm a bit nervous about a couple of things here. I'll just look at the, what's the cabinet wants us to make comments on. Most I agree with, no issue, the challenge of funding retrofit works is expensive. It is. I've gone through that myself at home, and I thought the estimate of 20,000 pounds is underestimation, it costs me more than that, albeit a retrofit. Well, that's probably one of the reasons why it's high, but that includes a whole rack of affordable takes and things like that. It is expensive, there is no other way around it. The balance of trying to achieve higher energy standards, you know, yes, we must do that, have to do that, is a question of how we make the cost. I'm nervous about the higher rent challenges. I fully understand what you're saying, 80% affordable rent, although I'm not quite sure about the comments made by my colleague over there about the private terms subsidising the council properties. We already do that through our council tax. So, and the government grants as well. So just think again about that one, because you won't get full support on that. The other things, what's the last one, the local plan one, yes, the whole thing, crucial, I think what we say in the local plan is crucial. If we are to get support through planning, and one of the debates is always when we're looking at new houses, whether the council houses or even private houses, is this question of energy upgrades. Energy costs, look as early as I can, come cheaper, although that's what we also saw back in the 1970s, when I seem to recall the cost of Barrow oil was pretty close to what it presently is, and it went down. Let's hope the same thing happens. I think the big difference now is there's a lot of us are depending upon what's going from Russia. I know that now issues about that. But on the other hand, well, Britain's concerned, it's balanced by the wind farms we've got in the North Sea and elsewhere, even the land ones, although we're not keen on those in this country. So all in all, thank you. So all in all, thank you for the report, Andrew, Richard and Andrew on the screen. Very useful document going with the HRA report. Thank you very much, Gillian, as well.
Thank you, Councillor Pearson. Councillor Tivell Cooper, did you want a point of clarity or are you happy to raise some?
No, I think the genuine point being that the climate emergency responsibility for the whole district to ensure the broader shoulders are also contributing to ensuring that we don't place an unfair burden on council tenants is a reasonable point to make, Councillor Pearson.
Thank you, Councillor Tivell Cooper. Councillor Westwood.
Thank you, Chair. Just want to get back to one of the first things you said around the retrofit coordinator being part time. I think it's absolutely vital that we've got the skills available and that we do not make a stage name for it. This is a massive programme, it's going to cost a lot of money, we need to get it right first time. So, you know, I'd urge that if we don't have the resources, then we need to know that we don't have the resources to be able to take this forward and the skills. So I think it's a really important role for the council and I think we need to get to a point where we have clearly defined what a successful retrofit looks like so we can properly cost it and then look at the scale. Second point to that is that with Councillor Warwick having the issued Hampshire level, there are a lot of skills in other authorities within Hampshire and within Hampshire County Council itself. We need to make sure that we're lined up and making use of all those other resources and sharing best practice between all of us.
Thank you, Councillor Westwood. Do I have any more to bring to the panel?
Yes, thank you. And it's been a really interesting paper to read and sort of understand the scale of the challenge. So in that sense, I think I've spoken to your first comment a little bit. I just want to try and on the cuff kind of respond to a couple of the points in section, in the section two of the recommendation. So you're asking around comments on the balance between achieving very high energy standards to new homes versus the opportunity to deliver more homes if unit costs were lower. I think that comes down to a couple of things. One is bang for the buck, you know, in principle, yet whatever, where's the sweet spot in terms of optimising the benefit for the amount spent? In principle, that sounds like there ought to be a sweet spot. But it's very difficult in this, with the amount of time that I'm giving to this paper or this time to sort of say where that is. But against that, there is this other factor of if the policy remains to only do things when it's a void, and I understand the challenges if it's not at that time, then you've got to balance off the, you know, take the opportunity while you can because you might not get the opportunity on that house for a long time. So I think that's a tricky, tricky point to really comment on, but that's, that'll be my view. And on this next section, the option of setting a higher rent charge for new homes are set out in section 5.7. I have to confess, I do not understand, I haven't really seen our rent structure in any detail. So it's very difficult for me to, I might be blundering into something and saying something really stupid here, but the fundamental principle seems to me that if a home is of a much better standard and has much lower energy costs than the home next door, I would think that there'd be some rationale in having some incremental rent, but not outrageous. It has to be affordable. And in effect, the tenant and the, and the council share the benefit. And where that, again, where that sweet spot is, I don't know, but it has to be enough to, and at some point, if we're, you know, if we're only doing things under voids, then in fact, the tenant hasn't really contributed to, hasn't needed to be incentivised to come forward. But if you're trying to encourage people to come forward, then there has to be an incentive and that incentive could be sharing the benefit. So again, it's a tricky one to answer in general, given that the situations are very, very different. So that would just be my two cents on trying to respond to those particular recommendations.
Thank you. Councillor Ken, you're the only person who hasn't spoken. Would you like to add anything?
Yeah, I would just add a brief point, I guess, on the sense of the ability to drive that change across the public sector. Of course, we're going to learn lots of things by the work we're doing. And I mentioned this on the Green Economic Development Strategy the other week, is actually sharing those learnings and getting that comms piece right is a massive benefit. Because at the end of the day, if we were talking on that point at another meeting, it was all about if you're encouraging people to do the energy charging for their cars, it means we haven't got to install one because a business might take it upon themselves to do it. So in the sense, the learnings we're going to get are going to be really useful to that private sector, so just maybe making sure we get a really nice comms piece around about this is what we've done, this is how you can do it. The private sector would be benefit and obviously drive that change in the private sector.
Thank you, Councillor Ken. I don't know whether Councillor Ernie, you'd like to add anything, just to throw some up, see?
No, I would like to correct the point about our housing being paid through, being paid for through council tax is wholly contained within the housing revenue account. And I think it's really important that we, we keep saying that, that it is tenants who are paying for all these things. One thing I would say about the rent structure is that our rents are much lower than private sector rents. So people at an 80% affordable rent, then clearly that's 80% of what they would be expecting to pay in the private sector. So that is still, you know, a good deal, but absolutely, we need to be sure that if we're asking people to pay more rent, that they are really seeing the benefit from that as opposed to otherwise. One, if we have a look at some of the benefits, a passive house, at current gas prices, you're looking at spending £15 less a week on heating your home, which, you know, for a lot of people, that's a significant amount. But clearly, if some of that is lost through having to pay more rent, then it's not as advantageous, but you will still live in a fantastically comfortable, well-ventilated home.
Thank you, Councillor Ernie. So if I, if I may, I'm just going to sum up a few, a few points. But first of all, thank you very much, Mrs Knight, for producing the paper. I know that you hadn't perhaps realised that this paper was coming and you had to produce it at quite short notice, but the paper you've produced has been valuable to the committee tonight, so I'm glad that you persevered with that. And thank you also to the officers who've obviously worked with you on that, Mr Kingston, Mr Palmer, Mr Reed and Mr Fox as well. I think, you know, we have to acknowledge the commitment that the council has made to retrofitting our own council homes. The £15 million for retrofitting isn't an insignificant sum. Yes, we need a lot more, but it's still a considerable financial commitment. I certainly too welcome the fact that we now have the retrofitting officer in place and all the specialised skills like Councillor Westwood. If that isn't enough resource, given the scale of the task, what more can, can we do to get that resource in place? I note in the report that at 3.14, we say that the officers are working with Net Zero Solutions, a national energy foundation, to come up with a sustainable, long-term retrofit plan. I would just ask that when that's available, that we, you know, that we have cited that either through the carbon neutrality programme and within that plan, it does evaluate the impact of those measures, both in terms of carbon reduction and also value to our tenants and also value to the council as one. So I think that's important. I think we've discussed the idea of affordability changes. There is always a question in Winchester around what does affordable actually mean? It might be 80% of market rates, 70% of market rate, but that doesn't necessarily still make them affordable to those people on the lowest incomes. But saying that, what we can do to reduce the carbon, insulate our homes, reduce the issue prices right there, I think that's really important. So thank you to the committee for your questions. Thank you to officers for the paper. And I know it's been a really useful discussion this evening. Right, I'm going to keep going, if I may. We are going to move straight on to the item eight on the agenda, which is our paper on a carbon offsetting policy. And I believe that we have Alex Eburn in the room with us today, supported by Mr Lincoln. Alex, it's really well, good to welcome you actually into the room today. We normally have you on screen, so it's nice to see that you have legs as well as a upper body. Are you introducing the paper or is Councillor Williams? Williams, you are.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councillor Ferguson. So carbon offsetting, so this paper is about looking at the options for carbon offsetting and understanding the realities that we as a council are working within. Although it is not preferred option, in the short term, it may allow us to continue to move forward. When we set our lofty ambitions, we knew that it would be difficult. This paper is about reality and making sure we put in place backup plans to support us and to allow us to work for a better carbon-free district. The team behind this are dedicated to making Winchester district a better carbon-free place and I do want to thank them for their hard work on this paper and everything that they do. I also wanted to draw attention to the Oxford Principles for the Net Zero Reliant Carbon Offsetting, which talks about the fact that emissions should be reduced as much as possible through energy efficiency measures before using offsetting, which is something we have been trying to do as a council. We then need to use high-quality offsets that are verifiable and correctly accounted for. And one of the key things about anything to do with offsetting is that at its core, it has to be transparent. Tonight, we're going to discuss this and look at it in detail with you at HEPC because that is what we do here at HEPC. And I also know that you care as much as I do about this issue. It's something that's, you know, important to the district, to us and to future generations. So I hope that, and I know we're about to get a very robust amount of questions and discussion. So thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Williams. I can see, Alex, that we have a presentation on the screen. Are we starting with that?
Yes, Chair. I will just be starting the very quick intro and then I'll go through the set of slides to go along with the report today.
If I may, if I could ask you to keep the presentation relatively brief because we have seen this in the report back and we still have another paper after this one. So thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So I just wanted to start very quickly by providing a bit of background about this paper and also a bit about how it ties into the CNAP. And then I've got the slides here, there's only a few slides and I'll run through them as well. And they give a bit more detail about the different types of offsets and also some of the options that are available to us. So to start with, in background, in 2.1 to 2.7, we set out that the CNAP goes through three key priorities, which are obviously energy, transport, property and housing. But it also states the need for offsetting as something to consider in terms of achieving our net zero goals. So it recognises that while reducing emissions remains a priority, our ability for Winston Council to achieve net zero will be extremely difficult without some form of offsetting. Definition of offsetting in the paper is the practice of reducing or removing greenhouse gas emissions, to balance ongoing greenhouse gas emissions in order to achieve claims such as carbon neutrality or net zero. And our early modelling that we set out in the paper as part of, together with the CNAP, indicated that we may have about 1,500 tonnes of residual emissions that we need to look at offsetting if we achieve our council 2024 target. Then at a district level, we haven't got that modelling yet, but there will certainly be a need for offsetting there. So this paper explores those different options. And I'll go to the slides now. The first slide here is a diagram which explains the types of carbon offsets. And this is lifted from the Oxford Offsetting Principles Report. I won't spend too long on this one, but what it does is it identifies five different types of offsets. You'll recognise that in the report, how we've listed them from one to five. They are separated here depending on whether they're an emission reduction or carbon removal. And this diagram as well sets them out really clearly in terms of how the carbon's stored and also how long the carbon's stored. That's a really great way of dividing different types of offsets. So just to touch on what they are, the first half are emission reductions and they are type one, which involves avoiding emissions altogether. So an example would be renewable energy generation and that's something we touched on in the report. Type two would then be avoiding damage to natural and semi-natural ecosystems. So that's all about preserving the carbon that already stored within the, so avoiding deforestation would be an example of that one. And then type three is storing carbon that was diverted from emissions and that's carbon capture and storage. The other ones are then are type four and type five, emission removals. Type four is our short-lived carbon storage and those ones often use nature-based solutions. So a really big one on that one would be tree planting, woodland creation. Type five is then long-lived carbon storage. These ones often use technologically mediated processes to remove carbon. They are bioenergy carbon capture and storage or direct air carbon capture and storage. And these ones, as I've got on the slide here, they aren't as commonly available at the moment. The technology's still in development, they're at an early stage, but there are actually local authorities with a lot of, with a lot of fire, kind of looking into some of these initial studies. This one then just goes in a bit more detail about the different carbon removal technologies. So those are your type four and five. On the left-hand side are the nature-based solutions, those are your type four, and they include coastal wetlands here, forests, regenerative farming, biochar. And then we start going over to the engineered ones, which are the type five, and those include things, as I said before, direct air capture, enhanced weathering and so forth. And now we go into the different options. So these are set out in the paper, but I just wanted to make them crystal clear in this report. The first one is renewable energy generation and that's a type one. And what I've done here is just capture some of the key takeaways from the report. The first one is that there is significant potential to address most of the council's residual carbon emissions through renewable energy generation. There's also potential with renewable energy generation for long-term revenue generation and other complementary activities. So that would be wildflower growth, tree planting, sheep grazing, biodiversity net gain, nitrate mitigation. And then the last point, which we made clear in the report, is that further work will be required to actually identify, plan and deliver large-scale solar farms, renewable energy on council land, that's what we're going to look into. And that also touches on to the head 14 paper that was presented at the last head committee. Woodland creation is the next one and that is a type four offset. It's one of the most established and well-known offsets reflected by the creation of the Woodland Carbon Code, which provides a standard for measuring carbon sequestration in trees and also a way of trading carbon credits. It's estimated that one hectare of woodland can sequester between 300 to 500 tonnes of carbon dioxide, over a hundred-year lifespan, quite a hard figure to pin down. So that's based on, on sort of best practice from lots of reports. It can also provide a range of co-benefits for biodiversity, flood risk mitigation and recreation. But in terms of reaching the 2024 carbon neutrality target, planting trees alone does imply viable option and that's with it being two years away. Trees require a certain amount of maturation before they can actually sequester maximum amounts of carbon. So that's just a point to recognise that. But in terms of district targets of 2030, tree planting should obviously form a key part of it for its sequestration benefits, but also because it had a multitude of other benefits. Carbon Offset Fund is the first option that we're looking at from a district perspective. The Carbon Offset Fund is obviously about developers requiring to pay into the fund to offset any residual carbon emissions from their development. Funds then bring events to the purpose of delivering carbon reductions and offsetting projects, and that could be all across the spectrum. That can be type one all the way up to type five. And several local authorities are in the process of setting these up or already set them up. I've included a few examples in the report. And our local plan consultation, I've spoken with Mr Fox about this and he indicated that there's been little public support of carbon offsetting funds, even as the last resort measure. So I thought I'd add that one in. The other one is then just looking at other opportunities and this is maximising the soft levers we have available to us as a council. I've listed a few here. There'd be mobilising about how can we encourage and incentivise businesses and communities to develop and invest in carbon offsets. Facilitating, so how can we work with existing action and energy in businesses and communities to support them to develop carbon offsets? Convening, talking about that partnership work between local communities and businesses, identifying and creating those offsetting opportunities. And lastly, collaboration. The report touched on authority-based incentive framework, which is a really great way of stimulating greater investment in carbon. And lastly, I'm just touching really quickly on the recommendations. And these are in the report, they're set out on the first page. The first one is then just looking at what I would like the committee to note, which is that there is a high likelihood that we need to offset residual emissions in order to achieve our council targets. Further work should be undertaken to provide an accurate assessment of the quantity of offsetting required to reach our target and also the important role for the council in facilitating options for others to offset their carbon emissions across the district. And then the Oxford Offsetting Principles as a best practice approach that we should follow. And lastly, this is the approach that we are setting out. To first maximise the delivery of carbon reduction measures throughout the council's operations and the district before using offsets to reduce carbon emissions. And offsetting shouldn't detract from that, from the carbon reduction we're doing. Select a portfolio of different offsetting options at both council and district wide scale, generating offsets locally within the district if possible. And I strongly recommend, based on best practice for local authorities, to develop offsetting options locally. And then to adopt approaches to address local emissions that it does not have direct control over by maximising soft levers, that's mobilising, facilitating and so on. And then lastly, an offsetting policy to be brought to Cabinet for approval. So this paper just sets out some of the key considerations and we'll obviously take away and build on some of them as well. So I'll just leave these up on the screen from hand to hand, and that's everything. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Alex. Actually, I prefer as if we took those off the screen and just brought us back to the committee room. Thank you. So obviously, this is a contentious topic. I'm sure there are questions, so I'm expecting those questions and a good lively debate around this topic. But I would like to thank Councillor Williams and also the climate emergency team for bringing this paper to us, because it's an issue we have to grapple with. We can't pretend it's not something we may have to do. Who would like to start off with a question? Councillor Warwick, I don't know whether you've got a bet with Councillor Pearson, but I keep looking right, but you keep picking. Which is very nice.
A good paper, thank you, Alex. Question, point two, point four sort of alludes to the challenge of offsetting. And you, on your finest shot on the screen there, you were saying that you would, if you're going to have to offset, that you would try and keep that within the district, which I think is absolutely essential. So that's really important. Do you have a feel for when you start to try and offset your district emissions, where those offsetting will be? Because I guess they will be beyond the district. And would you at least try and keep them in Hampshire? Or are you looking overseas or, you know, how does that work? Thank you.
Yes, certainly when looking at district emissions, you'd also want to keep them as local as possible. So we want to look in Winchester District for areas that we can actually develop these offsets. That would definitely be best practice. Keeping it as low as possible, certain benefits of offsetting can be experienced locally by the local people. There are cases of businesses, for example, who actually look at overseas investment. But that's something that we will doubt, looking at this paper, that's put in section three, purely because it's not a way of capturing the co-benefits of offsetting carbon reduction activities in the local area. That's really key from this. I think that's a key consideration that we took away is to maximise those local developments.
Coming with a real quick plea to you, Alex, and forgive me for this, but one of the most important things that are running at the county is community energy projects. And we know there are not enough of those in Hampshire, and Hampshire's investing in some of those. So where we've got one that's just gone live in Overton, just over the border. If that is an option for you, and that might be an option for this council to invest and give your seal of approval, if you like, so we're not asking for hundreds of thousands, but small investment helps seed outside investment. And community energy projects could be wind or they could be solar, but that would be a good use of the district's land. Thank you, Chair.
Still in, did you want to answer?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add to what Alex said and just kind of highlight the point that obviously the council's responsible for offsetting certain emissions. In terms of the district emissions, they're really the responsibility of everybody in the district who is emitting. So our role in that, and we tried to bring that out in the paper, our role in that is around creating opportunities for people to offset in a way that adheres to the kind of principles that we're setting out. So it's very hard for us to, well, you know, we can't determine where people choose to offset. We can hopefully create an environment and opportunity for them to offset in a sustainable and positive way. So just wanted to just have that, thank you.
Thank you. Steve, just a point of clarity on that. If there were a council scheme and there was a company that was in the district, that they wanted to buy some offsets from us, are you saying that wouldn't be possible? That scheme would only be for developers for new developments? It's quite confusing.
So I think what you're alluding to is the Carbon Offset Fund. Is that correct? Yeah, so we want that to be Winchester District-based funds, so that it would be for developers in the Winchester District, so that we can encourage net zero building and sort of bring emissions down for development. So that would be the key there.
But it wouldn't be available to people who have their own residual carbon, like the council has its own residual carbon, and they were trying to offset it if they hadn't been able to get to net zero themselves. That wouldn't be available to them.
Oh, I think what you're alluding to is, what we're not proposing here is sort of like a credit system where we're not trying to develop offsets for the sake of selling them to people to meet their objectives. I think when we're looking at district-wide offsetting, we're trying to maximise businesses' involvement in rolling out emissions, offsets across the whole of the district, get them thinking about what initiatives they can also do to bring down emissions within their own businesses. All of that collectively will help us reach the district target.
Thank you for the clarification. Councillor Pearson?
I thought that question just asked. But it's appropriate. Thanks, it's one of the ones I was going to go for as well. It's one of the best papers I've seen in carbon offsetting, thanks very much. So it's just a question of, you know, a bit more information. The first one that struck me as I was reading through this was the desire we have of planting trees on council-owned land. Exactly how much council-owned land do we have within the district? That's the first question. Go on.
Very good question. Yeah, it's something that we identify in this report, and we'd like to do further mapping to work out just how much land we do have available so that we can do this. Also looking at land available for renewable energy as another offset opportunity that we could look at. So certainly more work would be needed, required to develop this into a workable project and work stream. So that's what I'd say on that one. I'm not sure, if you've got anything to add?
I think there's probably other officers not in the room tonight who would have a much better idea than we have in terms of landholding and what we have. Clearly, the challenge, and we've had various discussions or some discussions around this, is there will be various demands or opportunities for the council to use its land in different ways. We have aspirations to build homes. We have lots of aspirations around improving biodiversity, around tree planting, various. So there's that ongoing kind of debate and dynamic around how to best use the land. I'd say in terms of actual quantity, I think colleagues in these states and others who would probably be able to answer that.
Thanks, Paul.
Oh, I think Mrs Hated wanted to come in. Could you possibly turn off your mic while she speaks?
No, no, more questions.
I know, but just while she speaks, please turn off your mic. I was just offering to pick up the action to make sure we get, there will be a figure, so we'll get that to you.
Okay, thanks for that. Yeah, because, you know, that's the thing, the theme I was reading through this, because you're putting a lot of stress on the importance of planting trees, which I agree is important, but not very much stress on the existing trees in the whole of the district. We've got the forest of beer, some plantations. Okay, it's not continuous trees, but forest nonetheless is pretty well there. And hedgerows as well is another aspect. So you didn't emphasise that, and I'll just touch on the next paper that I've traced. The other thing that I must say, when I was looking at paragraph 214, I'm actually very attention to that, which is something you've drawn from the Oxford Principles, which is a document I must dig out and have a look at myself, it looks very useful. I liked part one C there, maintaining transparency by disclosing the current emissions, which you are, we are doing, the counting practice C, which is a question mark. The targets to reach carbon neutrality, we'll pretty well know that, I think, from previous tests. Whereas the counting, we've been talking about carbon offsetting for the last three years. Since we created the, arguing favour of the climate emergency. How much money actually is being, has been put aside for carbon offsetting? Has it been spent elsewhere? Because that becomes important when we look at the Carbon Offset Fund. Because it, from comments and planning, the money is growing, but we're basically going. And that bits at one of them, but I do like in this paper that you should only do carbon offsetting to mop up what you can't do. Microgeology, but I think that's what you mean, isn't it? That I like very much. Emphasis on carbon removal, agreed, 100%. Carbon reduction, agreed, 100%. Carbon offsetting, I never had a light, no secret about that. So you want to make a comment about the carbon offsetting money so far?
Councillor Pearson, thank you for those comments. I'm sure you'll make them again in debate about what you like. So, Alex?
But if I just take that one, thank you, Chair. In terms of money spent by the council in terms of offsetting its emissions, we've spent nothing today. So obviously, we've set ourselves in the carbon neutrality plan and ambition to be carbon neutral for 2024. And we're making every effort as the paper sets out to try and reduce our emissions so we can achieve that. We highlighted in there, one of the points we ask the committee to note is the likelihood that there will still be some emissions at that point, primarily connected, at the moment, we expect to, the contracts we're tied into for park and bike service and the waste collection service, which the contract just means we're not going to be able to decarbonise those by 2024. So that's the most likely situation. And that's kind of where our estimation around the 1,500 comes from, which is our, the best estimation we have at the moment. In terms of budget, we wouldn't intend spending any money directly on offsetting our emissions until 2024 if we needed to. We're doing some work to develop thinking around some of the options in there, some of the ways we might achieve that, but no money's actually been spent on that at the moment.
Can I come up on that? Simple question.
Very brief, yes, of course. Could you put your mic, sorry, Councillor?
We've been collecting this money for three years. How much is it, where is it?
I don't know whether Councillor Pearson is referring to the nitrate money specifically. Are we, have we collected money?
Yeah, sorry, I was referring to money that we might spend in terms of offsetting our own emissions. I have to be honest, I don't know the answer to any funds that we've been collecting in terms of offsetting.
Perhaps, Mrs Hated, you could, you could have, because I'm not aware that we currently do. You're right, I think we might be crossing the nitrate offsetting, which is the same, it is an offsetting for the nitrate funds with the carbon offsetting. The carbon offsetting team don't receive any benefits. The nitrate offsetting, I'll get you my briefing note, you asked me about that last time, so I'll get you a full briefing note, but they pay for the nitrates to be offset. So they pay for land, in other words. So let me get you a full technical briefing note, so you've got it to have.
I can see the magnitude of money you're throwing, not sure how much. So I'm surprised, but I mean, one thing the paper talks about is pollution in Kenya.
Sorry. Yeah, so, sorry, Councillor Pearson. I'm sure Councillor Williams will come in on that in due course. I just, if I may, just ask you one question. You do actually look at the planting of trees, and you make a very good point, Alex, that, you know, even if you plant trees today, those trees would only really begin to sequester carbon in probably 10, 15 years' time because they're just too small. And I notice you put costs in for that, potentially for land, potentially buying the trees. We are coming on to the tree strategy next, and one of the things in the street actually that they are keen to point out, it isn't the cost of planting the trees, it's the cost of managing the trees. And I just note in this paper that we haven't included those costs. Was that a deliberate decision or was that just something that isn't usually counted to?
Not a deliberate oversight. It was very much something that we had a discussion about, didn't we? And it's something that, you know, now it's drawn upon here in the committee, we will definitely take away. It was just an initial look at some of the estimated costs, but we obviously would need to, if we were developing this into some project, we need to definitely consider the resources required for it as well.
Thank you. Councillor Williams, did you want to come back on Councillor Pearson's point? Or would you like to do that later?
I mean, I can briefly come back on it. I think we did mention it in council as well, that actually the point about Kenya and the trees there was within the section of the report that talks about, talks about even things that have been rejected, options that we looked at. So we looked at the whole spectrum of everything, because that's what you should do. But actually, that it had no real benefit to people in Winchester and that actually any taxpayers' money going out there would be seen as being, you know, not good, not good value for money. And actually, it's not good practice, so we had discounted it. But it was just that it had been included, so you could see where our thinking had been.
Thank you, Councillor Williams. Do we have one more question?
Yeah, I'll have a go.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Steve, I was wondering if you had noticed. I think Councillor Goo has a hand up, but sometimes you keep a list.
I was just going to ask Alex, Steve, about, I was pleased to see the Green City Solutions City Tree mentioned here, because I think one of my rather naive suggestions when I was first elected was whether we should be looking at this then. And I think each one costs in the region of £50,000 to £60,000. And obviously, if it's £275,000 trees equivalent, that feels a little bit of a short change, but you can stick it in three square metres of space. Do we know it would be good if we could get some kind of assessment of what's the cost of trees on new land with the land cost, the tree cost, the maintenance cost against one of those solutions? Because those solutions are quite exciting and quite interesting, and they also capture the imagination a little bit. So that's debate, but is that a possibility, do we think?
Well done, Councillor, to keep putting the question on the end.
I think that's certainly something that we could look into in terms of the next stage, the option appraisal. I agree when you talk about the city tree and some of the actual value it has beyond offsetting in terms of actually raising the profile. But yeah, we're certainly going to look into costing and evaluate that, all the other considerations. There was deliberately put in there in the report just to show that there are hybrid options available, and they will need further consideration.
Thank you, Alex. Councillor Westwood and Lady Councillor Croysen?
Thank you, Chair. Section two, dot 24, we talk about the significant potential to address most of the council's residual carbon emissions through a solar farm. I'm just interested as to what size solar farm we needed to offset the council's potential 1,500 tonnes.
So this is based on my knowledge from some other councils that have developed solar farms as well. It's one, I can't think of the name off the top of my head, but they have received planning, their application has been, you know, they received permission to go ahead with a solar farm that has the potential of offsetting 2,000 tonnes of carbon emissions, bringing their total, the carbon emissions down to net zero, which is really good when that goes ahead and it's in operation. You're looking at something that's going to be over at least 10 megawatts, am I saying that correctly? It's going to be a large-scale solar farm, a utility scale is what they call it. Obviously, it's going to differ depending on unique circumstances, the particular radio used, the setup, other factors like solar radiance in your local area. So I can't say immediately what exactly a solar farm would need to look like to achieve the 1,500 tonnes that we require. But there is potential with a large-scale solar farm to offset a lot of emissions.
Thank you. Councillor Westwood?
That kind of answers my question, but doesn't answer it. I'm just interested in how big this would be. And either in power, when we can work out the size of it, or in square metres or hectares or whatever it might be.
Thank you, Councillor Westwood. I do believe in the, in the report, it says that you are still looking into this. And there is a report coming or work being done for feasibility, is that correct?
There's definitely some feasibility work being looked at into understanding exactly these things. We can definitely go, Alex is right, in my head, I had 10 megawatts as the figure. We've definitely got some information about what that translates to in hectareage. I can't recall it right at the moment. We can definitely make sure we share that information.
If you perhaps could share that with the whole committee, Mr Lincoln, that would be useful. Thank you. Councillor Croysen?
Thank you. Um, so this is again a paper where I think, you know, getting started, moving forward is, is really important, and, uh, I think you'd be brave to take this on. Um, and, um, you know, because it is breaking new ground for the council. Um, so, well done. Um, I've, uh, I've got a couple of questions, I'm trying to figure out, string them together into a coherent thing, but, uh, the first question is around, if we were to go down a route of offsetting, what lead time do we need to kind of do the offsetting? You know, if it's, if it's three months, uh, then we can, you, you, we can wait a bit, but if it's two years, we haven't got long. So that's the first part of it. The second part is in section three point three, where we talk about the estimated cost to offset fifteen hundred tees, carbon, whatever stuff, and it's in the range of nine to, uh, twenty grand, give or take. Um, so I, I think I understood that figure is, is sort of the residual expected at that point, but kind of what I'm wondering is, if we did nothing else to reduce our carbon, and we were where we are today, how much would we need to be offsetting to, in effect, cheat, you know, get there? I know it's not the way we want to do it, but it's how much would we have to spend to do that? Because then that gives us a metric that we can use over time to say, okay, we've now done this solar farm, we've now done something else, we've now planted five hundred acres of trees, and we calculate that that means it's reducing our offsetting, uh, commitment, if you like, gradually. It gives us a, a metric that we can all follow, and I'm just wondering, does that sound plausible as a way of thinking about it?
Um, I start trying to say that one, thank you, Chair. Um, so based on where we believe we currently are, so fifteen hundred is where we're currently forecasting we'll be by twenty twenty four. At this moment, we think we're roughly around, uh, three thousand tonnes, which is showing a good trajectory from where we started and where our baseline was. So, so in terms of your question about if we were to do nothing from this point onwards, where would we be? You could kind of very, very roughly look at double all the figures we're talking in there, because fifteen hundred is where we expect to be, we're about three thousand now, so if we stop doing everything else now, it would be about double what we're talking. So, um, that figure quote we're there, we're talking nine, nine to nineteen thousand, you'd be talking sort of roughly twenty to forty thousand. Um, in terms of the timeframe, um, it, it would really depend, obviously we're talking here about the fact that the best approach, we think, is a, is a sort of a, a menu of options, a series of options, depending what, what the approach is. So for example, we've obviously started, like we say, looking and thinking feasibility around a solar farm, for example, the likelihood is that, that will take us, you know, somewhere towards a couple of years to get from ground zero where we are now to actually having something in place. So, so, you know, our timeframe on that i- is that, and so, which is why work started. Um, obviously Alex already highlighted the fact that tree planting, again, you know, that's not going to help us in terms of where we're, where we are by twenty twenty four because of the time that that takes to set it in. So it's, it's why we wanted to get some clarity now around this paper, even though it feels maybe quite early, it really isn't, to be thinking about this stuff, because we need, it's an important part, we recognise it's an important part of our approach, and we recognise that we need to understand members' thoughts and agree policy, and eventually bring one to cabinet, which was part of our recommendation, to get, to get some very clear direction, so that we know, we really know what direction we're, we're taking it. So, um, I don't know if that, if that helps with the answer.
Let's ask a supplementary. Um, so I have a supplementary there, which is, if we can deal with fifteen hundred with a commitment of twenty ten, twenty grand, why don't we just spend, uh, between twenty and forty grand and just completely achieve the target straight away, compared with fifteen point seven million on, uh, investing in homes? So I'm trying to square that in my head, I'm sure I'm oversimplifying it.
I think the first point I'd make is that the fifteen million on homes is in, um, reducing emissions related from our council housing stock, those don't actually fall part of our council carbon footprint, because that energy's consumed by the tenants in the homes, that falls apart of the district carbon footprint, so that's an investment by the council, in, in clearly around, um, setting, setting a good example, which, you know, we talked about the fact we're roughly ten percent of the district's, um, housing stock, and we set an example with our, with our ten percent, then hopefully the other ninety percent in people in private ownership will, will take their leave from us on that. Um, so, so the, the fifteen million committed on that doesn't really equate to, to this. Um, yeah.
Um, thank you councillor Croyston, and, um, there are no, there are no stupid questions, because somebody else might also want to ask that question, so thank you for doing that. Um, I've got two questions, if I may, and they're around the, um, carbon offset fund for developers, so new homes being built. Um, I know that, you know, our principle very much is to reduce as much carbon first, the offsetting is the last resort, um, in all instances. For developers, um, we can put something in the council plan, hopefully, that will ask them to adhere to much higher standards in terms of, um, carbon efficiency of the homes that they build. But offsetting for them may not be a last resort. Um, they may see it as an easier option. I know there was a big debate around nitrate fund, offsetting fund again, whether it just gave developers a way out, you know, and I'm sure that's a concern that residents have. Is there any scope in the carbon offsetting fund to limit what proportion of carbon a developer could offset? So is there an opportunity to say, you would only be able to offset, I don't know, ten percent, twenty percent? You'd have to get eighty percent of the carbon offsetting through the development. Now, I know that's connected up to the local plan and affordability and all sorts of other things, but I just wondered if there's scope for that, and if other authorities have done it? That's the first question. And then linked to that, the second question, we've talked a lot, um, when we've been looking at the carbon neutrality plan, which we refer to as the CNA, for anyone listening, um, in all of the different elements, transport, um, energy generation, and we've talked about the importance of bringing people with us, hearts as well as minds. Now, if we've done a consultation to part the local plan, and our residents have said, no way, we don't want, even if it's the last resort, a carbon offset fund, we think that lets people off the hook, how do we bring them round if the council, which is meant to be showing the leadership and really addressing the climate emergencies, setting ourselves into drastic targets, how do we bring them around if we are in fact going down that route? So two quite difficult questions, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'll give them a go at the first question. Um, I think that is certainly a danger of carbon offset funds, um, the way they're managed, I tried to take a balanced approach in the paper and then describe it in that way. Um, it could be used, for example, as a, a get out of jail clause by developers, as a way of saying, you know what, instead of taking any, um, actions to reduce emissions, I can invest into a fund, and that will, that will do, that will do, that will do us for the development, and that's not what we're trying to propose. Um, and I think that's something, if we ever did develop an offset fund, it needs to be strongly built into, um, into the standards, to make sure that's not, not used. Um, and I think in terms of your, your question about, is there scope to, to limit the actual use of it, there certainly is. Um, I know that other authorities have set carbon offset funds, that is the, that is the stance they take. It's, we want to only limit people to use a certain amount of, of offset funds, um, we want them to invest as much in their development as possible to reduce emissions before considering offsets, that's certainly something that could be developed into an offset fund.
And in terms of the second question, um, around what people have said through the local plan, um, I think one thing we need to do, we've obviously referenced it in here, we haven't had a huge amount of discussion with Mr. Fox and the, and the planning team around, okay, what exactly was that response? What was the scale of the response? You know, how many, how many people replied to that? Who were those people? How representative is it likely to be? So we need to better understand the, the strength of, of that feedback that we've had, but we felt it was important to recognise it in the paper, that that was certainly some, some initial, um, feedback that we've seen. Obviously, we also need to really consider what the alternatives are. Um, so, you know, part of the, the difficult role that, that we and members will have is in, in identifying something which might at first appearance not be that popular, but actually what will be alternatives, they may be even less popular, so we, we really need to understand that properly. And then I think the third thing is if we do feel that it's an approach which is either the right approach or part of the, the, the package of options, then we need to educate, um, and increase people's understanding. Not an easy thing to do, I mean, you know, this paper, I, I found it, so, thank goodness we've got Alex here, so, you know, it's not something I found very easy to understand, there's a lot of stuff in there. And one of the things we need to do, as with this whole programme of work, is, is find ways to try and communicate the messages and increase people's understanding and awareness. So, so I think those three things would be, would be, I think, where we need to go in terms of determining that.
Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Lincoln, uh, councillor Williams?
I think on that sort of point about carbon offsetting fund, I think one of the things that we have to be careful with local plans and with anything that we're putting in is what's nationally part of the planning process as well. And if we are going beyond what national government is requiring in like planning, and it becomes very difficult for us to enforce it, we know that developers aren't going to want to, we know that there's a pushback on all of these things, that they'll all say it's too expensive, it's difficult for us to be able to produce houses that are standard. I think the key thing is we have to keep looking at how we work with government to actually make sure we have some real teeth, because if we're going to go and say, no, you have to be one hundred percent carbon neutral on every single property that's built here in Winchester, how do we police that? How do we make that actually happen? So sometimes there is that awful thing of the kind of compromise of where we are at the moment, and, you know, if there isn't that teeth from government and we're not able to enforce that, then are we just letting it slide and then nothing comes? And actually, that's the worst of both worlds, isn't it? We're not getting any money to support, you know, carbon offsetting, and they're also getting away with not doing it. So is that a really difficult balance?
Thank you, thank you very much. And, and I suppose the issue then is what we do with that money, which someone else might want to pick on. Um, it is ten to nine, um, I'd like to close questions, I'm going to just check if councillor Croyston, don't have any specific?
No, I don't have a specific question, no, thank you.
Thank you. So if we could again just try and have just ten minutes of debate on this, I know councillor Gibson, you've got some things you'd like to say. Um, would you like to start?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, as I said, Alex, I, I like this paper very much, I didn't want to, to query to have, which I've already asked. What I am not sure about is the, the committee's concentration on the carbon offsetting, which to me is a developer saying, I know I shouldn't be doing this, creating this pollution, I'm going to pay a fine, but do it. That does not do any benefits of carbon reduction. That's why I think carbon offsetting as a basis of what we're doing is immoral, it's wrong. On the other hand, what you've got in your paper, which I do like quite much, is the concentration on carbon removal via biodiversity, trees in particular, as well as, um, meadows, hedgerows and so on. The carbon reduction again, what we're doing to our housing, uh, to our housing, retrofitting the housing, new build housing, all positive, all reducing, um, the carbon emissions that are coming from us houses. We're also going to add to that, of course, what we're doing to try to reduce, um, carbon emissions from the vehicles that we're driving as well, because that's the other source. Um, we concentrate on housing here, rightly, because that's basically what it is about. Um, so what, you're concentrating also just on the city urban area, the council on land.